And good evening and welcome to the April 24th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in attendance with us tonight and we're certainly glad to have those of you that are viewing this meeting live on television. At this time, I'd like to ask you to please stand. We have two students, Amy Wade, a fifth grade student from John Pittard, Lexie Supole, a sixth grade student from Mitchell Nielsen, to lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. All right, members of the board, we're going to approve our agenda. You have had the agenda and you've got it before you. I'm going to ask that in approving that agenda, we remove the item under action items pertaining to the budget, simply because Mr. Anderson does not have all the facts and figures that we need to complete that. So if I could have a motion to approve the budget eliminating the report on the budget.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. King. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, communications.
Mr. Campbell, before I start tonight, I want to make sure that folks know that our school board meetings are now being broadcast in closed captioning. So that started at our last meeting and I was asked to let you know that.
Thank you.
As far as, and so if anyone wants to replay, they'll see them in closed captioning as well. As far as communications, we are pleased to announce that Leah Bartsch has been asked to serve on the advisory council for the regional invention convention. Also, thank you to Middleton C State University for their partnership with Club Marvel and for hosting our students again this year. On Saturday, the 14th, more than 50 students, their parents, and several from central office attended the graduation ceremony. In addition to MTSU, we also want to thank Mr. Greg Lyles for his leadership of Club Marvel, the transportation department, teachers Kenesha Sullivan, Francina Austin, Kim Nelson, Candy Powers, and Kelly Jones for working with the students on Saturdays throughout this past school year. We also want to thank MTSU for hosting the Special Olympics again this year. I know many of you were there. We had students competing from Black Fox, Casey Lane, Irma Segal, Northfield, Reeves-Rodgers, and Scales. They joined nearly 500 other student athletes from across the county to compete in the various events and that's always a special day and it was a beautiful day to be competing. Our thanks also extended to Northfield's Tammy Sutton, Hobgood's Chick Nutter, Overall Creek's Erin Nunley, and Mitchell Nielsen's Allison Murphy for coaching students at the recent middle school mathematics competition at MTSU. Thanks to Cindy Klisch, who assisted all of the teams. The competition involved about 20 schools in the region and MCS competed in the sixth grade competition. Congratulations to Northfield's Kevin Scott Slate, who placed 16th in the competition. Overall Creek's Hayden Sustep, who placed fourth in the competition. And Overall Creek, as an elementary, placed sixth among all the schools. That was really some great work on the part of our schools. Also, on Saturday, April 28th, so this coming Saturday, the 11th elementary, 11th Annual Elementary Science Olympiad will be held at John Pittard Elementary. Pittard has hosted this event since its conception and it's done in combination with MTSU once again. This year, we will have Bradley, Discover, Discovery, Irma Segal, John Pittard, Northfield, Reeves-Rodgers, and Scales competing. We want to thank Billy Joe Thompson, Suzanne St. John, Shay Payne, Eric Matthews, Angela Pope, Casey Jones, Caleb Jones, Luke Dickerson, Stacy Burke, Zan Lasco, and Sandra Smith for coaching the teams over the past weeks and we want to wish those competitors well wishes for Saturday. Kindergarten registration, it's going to be held for the 2018-19 school year, will be Thursday and Friday, May 3rd and 4th. All children entering kindergarten must be five years old before August 15th of 2018. You can find an overview or registering your child for kindergarten at our City Schools website and that's citieschools.net. Just go under the search bar for new student registration or kindergarten registration. Either way, they'll find the information they need. Just a reminder to everyone who is listening, Murfreesboro City Schools will be closed on Tuesday, May 1st for Election Day. I don't think I have to remind students or parents of that, but everyone else, we will be closed for that Election Day. We also want to take time to congratulate Mr. Bill Spurlock, who was recently named the Director of Rutherford County Schools. We look forward to a very strong collaborative relationship with Mr. Spurlock and also to the continuing partnership we have with Rutherford County Schools. Now, there's a large group of ladies to my right that are here and we want to say congratulations to the MCS cheer competition team. This was their first year in existence and they did compete in nationals. So yay ladies, I'm going to hand it over to the coaches in a sec. I'm going to step aside and let the coaches tell you about this team.
My name is Jessica Jacobs and I'm one of the three coaches.
I'm Megan Brewer.
And I'm Amber Kelly.
We were really, really thankful that you all gave us this opportunity this year and that we had the chance to get to know all of these girls from across the district. We had 31 girls this past season. We placed first at our regional and then fourth in the nation. So we were really, really proud of how hard they worked. We just recently had tryouts for this upcoming season. We actually have two teams, a youth, which is kind of a younger, and a junior team. We are excited to say we represent all 12 schools this season. So we have girls from all across our district.
I have a question. Were any of you three ladies cheerleaders in your elementary or high school years?
We all have in the past, yes.
Very good. Good deal. Thanks. Well, congratulations ladies.
Thank you.
Very good.
We want to see the trophies.
Yeah.
I mean, they're kind of hard to miss in general, but they are big. That is awesome.
Yeah. How about a cheer?
So what grades do y'all represent? What grades?
This team is four through six. Next year, we'll have kids from first through sixth. So we'll have a cross-grade next year.
Wow, that's wonderful. Well, good luck to y'all next year.
We have several girls too, who have tried out in the real schools that have gone seventh grade for next year.
And those schools are lucky to have our good cheerleaders too. Right. Dr. Gilbert, was there anything you wanted to add?
No, I just wanted to let them know that it's interesting how life works. One of our new hires, as a matter of fact, will be working with the junior team and they were really excited that Murfreesboro had a cheer team. The three teachers work free, basically. And I don't know whether we have time. I know it's always difficult to do this, but is there any chance that we could, would it be too convoluted to have them introduce themselves, the girls? I'd just like for them to get some television time.
I think we can do it very orderly. We can do this something.
All ready? Are y'all up for it?
I don't think they're shy, they're cheerleaders.
When they do it, can they say their names and their schools and their grades?
Yes, school and grade.
So girls, the board would like for you to come up, introduce yourselves, say your name, your school, and your grade level, please. You got that? All right.
Let's start in.
My name is Annalise Poplin. I go to Discovery School at Bellwood and I am in fourth grade.
My name is Samantha Loomis. I'm from Overall Creek Elementary and I'm in fifth grade.
And ladies, if you could go ahead and form a line a little bit, that would be great.
My name is Sophie Goff and I go to Scales and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Jory Miller. I'm in fifth grade and I go to Bradley Academy.
My name's Nora Miracle. I'm in fifth grade and I go to Scales.
My name is Kylie Travis. I'm in fifth grade and I go to Scales.
My name is Genesis Mokel and I'm in sixth grade and I go to Scales.
My name is Cameron Coker. I'm in the sixth grade and I go to Scales.
My name is Jaylen Elliott. I go to Scales and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Grace DeLuca and I'm in sixth grade and I go to Scales.
My name's Kanai and I'm in fifth grade and I go to Scales.
My name is Nova. I am in fifth grade and I go to Scales.
My name is Juliana. I'm in fifth grade and I go to Casey Lane.
My name is Alex and I'm in the sixth grade and I go to Casey Lane.
My name is Takara McCullough. I'm in sixth grade and I go to Northfield.
My name is Mia Covington. I'm in fourth grade and I go to Scales.
My name is Addison Leo and I'm in fifth grade and I go to Scales.
My name is Emma Brewer. I go to Scales and I'm in sixth grade.
That's it? Can we give them one more?
Thank you ma'am. I have two other items. Lexie, the alone who did our pledge is the county wide Read to Succeed Spelling Bee Champion. Also, I will remind the board and the general public as well, Rutherford County Schools is hosting a meeting on school safety, will be held May the 7th at 5:30 in the afternoon at Blackman High School. And all of you are encouraged, you're welcome to attend. It'll be a meeting with several different law enforcement agencies and we will be discussing school safety. So it should be a good meeting and like I said, everyone is invited. Thank you. All right, our consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Rehneer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right. Action items.
Your first action item tonight, and I don't have any information on this except just what we have heard, but with the passage of the legislation where student grades can count now zero to 15 percent, and so I would like to recommend that the grades that, or the scores from the TCAP scores, I would like to recommend to the board that this year that they count zero percent. I understand that we had paper pencil testing, but I also know that there were major difficulties with that paper pencil testing. And I think that for our students, that our teachers are capable of giving them the grades that they need without having the input this year of the TCAP test.
All right, Ms. Smith?
So, can you tell us what the major difficulties were with the paper pencil testing?
Well, I wish that, well, as a matter of fact, I can look it up, but there was everything from an email that was sent out at 12:15 on the night before this, actually the Sunday night, that the test was supposed to happen on Monday, that had to do with some changes. We had some boxes that were damaged, we had some, and I don't know, Mr. Marlin, I don't know whether you're prepared to talk about that. And Lori is not here.
I can say that having heard from this often, that there were some issues with score sheets matching up exactly, and that's the only thing I can think of that I know, that she has said to me so far, as far as that. Last minute changes, but that was the biggest issue, some score sheet mix-up.
Well, I'm just going to read what she had written. One of the first unorganized things in paper testing was that the arrival of the materials boxes were received on a UPS truck 71 times, 40 another time, more a third time. They had to be sorted by school with some boxes not having school labels on them. Another problem with the shipment was that no boxes were labeled, what number out, what number out of the total number. This made tracking materials very difficult because she had no idea how many total boxes each school was to have. Also, boxes were heavily damaged, materials would have fallen, could have fallen out during shipment and we would not have known. She attached pictures on this particular email. The spiraling of the test books led to a lot of human error. APs mixed C and D forms together in classes because the form was the same, but the versions were different. For example, D4 and C4 were mixed in a classroom. I called Questar to get new labels sent for third grade to fix this issue. I was informed from the company that no new labels would be generated because it would take at least two weeks. That was out of our test window. I reached out to the state and was told that this was an issue in many schools and information on how to correct it was coming. We took another set of labels for report of irregularities and put them on books that needed to be corrected. I then had to do basically what are called RI's, their irregularity reports, to the state for every class that had double labeled books for Questar to stand appropriately. Schools finished part one of the ELA and we were boxed up to send out before our shipment window closed. And on Thursday of last week, we received labels that would have fixed our problems the second day. Schools also received very little overages this year. This created a problem making sure third and fourth ELA all had the same versions and when creating small groups were all subject except science. For read aloud groups, all students have to have the exact same book. So I was short district overage and had to pull a book here from a school to cover another school and so on. We have only, we have 12 schools in Murfreesboro City Limits and last week, I put 172 miles in my car driving test materials to school to cover them. On Thursday before testing began on Monday, we received notice from the state that the read alouds for ELA, which is English third grade and fourth grade, were going to be skipped. This created stress on teachers because as they were reading the test script, telling students to skip questions and to find the correct place on their book or answer documents, they needed to check every student to make sure they were at the correct spot to pick up bubbling. For fourth grade, I worry about how many students missed bubble because they were going from book to answer document to record answers. I know some errors were caught by students and they told teachers, but I know we are submitting fourth grade ELA answer documents that are missed bubbled and the scores will not reflect what students know. Now, that's from her. There was also an issue that the actual standards changed in October. We discovered it in late February and I believe the email was sent from the commissioner about that in March. And there were some other things that happened as far, there was one part, I think the read alouds, the teachers had practiced on the read alouds and then they changed and said, no, we're not going to do the read alouds. So it's been, it's been quite a disaster from last fall.
So, this vote would have been happening anyway because what we haven't voted on is that we won't have the scores in before the report card.
And I'm not sure whether we have, I don't think we voted on that this year. The way that the law reads is, I believe, is if we don't get the scores before, five days before the end of the school year ends, then, then we cannot include the scores. But the way the law also reads, I believe, is that we had to count, I believe, 15 percent this year. It was different than previous years and it's going to work its way up to a certain percentage, if I'm correct, Joe. I don't remember.
I'm thinking that was maxed to 15 percent of the total grade.
Yeah. I mean, I understood it still even during our meeting, but it was never scheduled to get in before the end of school. We were never scheduled to have it in. So, I will say, it was, it may not have been perfect because of all the craziness that our administrators saw and the teachers saw, but maybe the kids didn't see it as much this time. Now, that didn't mean that it wasn't, I mean, it was horrible two years ago, but I am.
I think that.
It's dismal, it's ridiculous what's happened all the time, but it was improvement. And the kids did their part and they looked more confident and I'm hearing that.
Right. And I think, I think that had to do, not so much with what the state did, but I think that had to do with our decision to go paper pencil in fifth and sixth. I think if we had had the online, we would have had an unbelievable mess.
Oh, that was a really good decision.
Yeah, I think that.
It was, it was.
But, but I think, I do think that there was, I think there were, there's still enough questions that I, and I, even if we had gotten everything perfect, even if no child had skipped a bubble, I think just the convoluted issues that, that the schools have had, especially the schools with the online testing, I don't, I don't know that there is a, I would have loved to have seen, and I think we will see our scores because we received information today that, we actually have a webinar in the morning at 8 o'clock to let us know about that. So I think we will see our scores. I think, I think the issue of counting against teachers, counting against students and having that, and that we can say with 100 percent validation, that those scores are accurate is where the difficulty is. And I think it may be in our minds more than in reality perhaps, but it's still in our minds and that's.
So the legislation that passed, we were having a conversation earlier about it, there will be no implications on our teachers about their scores?
I'm, that was the, that, I think that was the spirit of the legislation. I think we'll know after, more after tomorrow morning.
And the district also, right?
Pardon?
It should not count against, excuse me, the district also.
I think, I think we'll know more after tomorrow morning. I think they were very clear about it not, that we could not make employment decisions based on test score results and they were very clear about the A through F. I think there's still a real question about, and I, and I believe there will be from, we had, we received a sheet today and I have waited to give that out because I want to see what's said tomorrow. But I do think there are implications that, that there will be, that scores will be made public and that there may be some consideration of that in the teacher evaluation.
So, my question is, do we, we have to decide ahead of time whether we want to do it or not? We can't wait until we get them and say, these are good, let's use them. That would be perfect, wouldn't it? The other question that I had is, do we have an idea of the percentage of tests that may have been, we have no idea.
No, we don't have an idea. Testing is so tight, that, that is the one way teachers can lose their jobs is, or one of the ways, one of the prime ways that, that is in legislation that teachers can be dismissed is if there's any kind of looking at the test, talking to the students about the test, any kind of impact of the test. So for that reason, it's really hard to tell whether students, unless you have, and you'll have a proctor in the room that can help with some of that, but, but there's not, it's almost to the point that anyone is afraid to correct if a student is wrong, but yet we encourage them somehow to let the student know. But it's, it's very hard when a student gets off track with, with the numbers.
And I'm going to guess that all of the stress of even getting it administered, I think kids somehow, somehow pick up on the stress of that. Mr. Barrett?
You said zero to 15. Is that, is that for all grades? Okay, K through six, for ours, okay, for, okay. I just want to make sure because I, I know there's discussion, discussion about third through five, you know, doing something like this. So it's all K through six, zero?
It would be the ones, it would be the ones that took 10 ready, so.
That's what I'm saying. So we would have the option as a board to go zero percent if we're counting, okay.
Ms. Rehneer?
I move that we consider whatever zero percent for our scores for next year. That we move in that direction.
Okay. Have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
All right, now, Mr. Ballard?
I support the idea of the zero percent, but I guess in my mind, I'm trying to understand if we take that 15 percent out, because of all the screw-ups and the thing, but anyway, so we're going to take 15 percent out of the grade. What is, how are we judging the achievement for the year? Where's that, where does that, this used to be TCAP and then it replaced, 10 ready replaced TCAP. And TCAP for years was what was included in student achievement. So basically, we've tossed aside 15 percent of student achievement as a measurable. How do we, how do we compensate for that?
10 ready is actually part of the Tennessee Comprehensive Assessment Program, so TCAP is still the umbrella that's over it. 10 ready is the one that's going to impact us. As far as what the law says, and Joe, you'll have to help me here, and because it has to do with second semester grades and it has to do with 15 percent of that grade. So instead of the letter grade coming all the way from the teacher, part of the letter grade a student would receive would come from the scores on the TCAP and that's where that 15 percent comes in.
Okay.
I still think that we weren't going to be able to count it this year anyway.
Right, I understand that.
But I mean, but I also think these kids have been working towards this the whole school year. It's, it's kind of a, not satisfying, I guess.
The whole thing just blows my mind. I mean, I can't imagine if you, you know, if you're Southwest Airlines and you're going to take off 15, I mean, 250,000 times and 22,000 times you can't take off, you've got a problem. And that's basically what it boils down to is that, so, somebody, hopefully will get this straightened out.
We have schools, all of our schools have worked tremendously hard this year and for them not to be able to figure, find out what, what they really scored is, is really disappointing. I think they will be able to find that out. I hope they will be able to find that out. From all indications, they will be. But I understand why the legislature, and I felt personally, that we did not hold, need to hold that accountability of teachers to these tests if we can't be sure that the test scores reflect truly what the teachers, students have learned, especially in those school districts that did the online.
Mr. King, you have a question?
I just, the outages, even though we didn't do online, there were outages across the country from Questar. So it's not a Tennessee problem. It's a vendor problem. And Questar is a different vendor than we had last time. And from hearing the descriptions, they still couldn't get the printed materials to us, to me, in a timely manner, to be separated, segregated, and things like that. So again, even with the dates known, that we still seem to get put behind the eight ball, no matter what we choose to do.
Well, I want to thank the legislators because it seems like they really represented our, our kids and our teachers with this and I appreciate their, their.
Jumped on it.
Rapid.
Response. And I, and it, I think all of ours were in that boat and I think most of the others were as well and the entire legislative body from the state of Tennessee, I think, need to be commended for.
And Kelly just pulled up the statute. It was in 1617, the percentage would be 15, I mean, 10 percent. In 1718, the percentage would be 15 percent. So if they had not passed that, then we would have that, and we would not have that choice. What we would have had the choice of is deciding if it didn't get here in time, then, but if it had gotten here in time, we wouldn't have had a choice but to count it 15 percent if they had not passed the law.
All right, we have a motion and a second to put our percentage at zero for student grades. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, reading of board policies.
Okay. Your first, your first board policy is the separation practice for non-certified and this is kind of a change that, and I'm going to let Mr. Ringstaff talk about that.
Back in September 2017, you passed 5.202 separation practices for non-certified employees. What we'd like to do is add two sentences, lines 13 through 15. These sentences give the classified employees an avenue to appeal their dismissal if they choose to do so. And I'll read it. Classified employees who are notified that their services are no longer required may request a reconsideration of that decision by the director of schools. Such requests must be made in writing within 10 working days from the date shown on a notice to the employee. So we recommend the addition to this board policy.
Have a motion to approve?
All right, we have a motion and a second to put our percentage at zero for student grades. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. All right, reading of board policies.
Okay, your first, your first board policy is this separation practice for non-certified and this is kind of a, a change that, and I'm going to let Mr. Ringstaff talk about that.
Back in September two thousand and seventeen, you passed five point two zero two, two separation practices for non-certified employees. What we'd like to do is add two sentences, lines thirteen through fifteen. These sentences give the classified employees an avenue to appeal their dismissal if they choose to do so. And I'll read it, classified employees who are notified that their services are no longer required may request a reconsideration of that decision by the director of schools. Such requests must be made in writing within ten working days from the date shown on a notice to the employee. So we recommend the addition to this board policy.
Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles, any discussion?
This is the only change that was made?
Yes, sir.
You thought I was going to make you read the whole thing?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you.
Your next board policy is board policy six point two zero three. This is school admissions, it replaces STU three, STU seventeen. You'll notice that they are, this board policy is very similar to those and if you have any questions, I'm going to refer them to Mr. Anderson on this one.
Line seventy-eight, I'm sorry, line eighty, where it talks about, provided that the student and parents pay the relevant tuition and comply with all policies. What is that tuition?
Three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Three thousand two fifty, okay, thank you.
And that's been the same rate now for quite a few years.
So how is that determined?
It was determined by, by the board years ago and it was a stepping, it stepped up to this amount, but it's been flat now for about four or five years.
And it had to do, Gary, with the cost, it had to do with the cost of educating the child, right?
Yes, the, it was staged in over, over time. I think it was like four years of increases and it's based on how much money comes from the local city coffers. Because you get, state money follows the, follows the student, but it was, it was figured on what, was the local monies being contributed at the time.
What is the amount today, approximately?
The state pays about fifty percent of the total cost and if we're about nine thousand, it's about, probably going to be about forty-five hundred dollars, four thousand, forty-five hundred. It's a little more convoluted than that because you have property tax you take into consideration, you take in how much the city is kicking in on, in addition to that. Because remember, property tax is split with us and the county and we get roughly fifteen percent of that, so it's a little more convoluted than just a flat dollar amount. We would have to go back and recalculate.
So we are, are we in pretty good shape then with the thirty-two fifty figure?
Yeah, we're going to be at eight, we'll be getting over eight thousand dollars per child then, based on the state money that follows the child and that, so we're, we're real close to it.
Okay, all right. Ms. Renier?
In this same policy, I had the same questions about this area. Do you not want it, the amount listed here on the policy, is there an AD that has it?
We, we can have an AD out, I need to check, I haven't checked on that to see whether we have an AD.
I just wondered if you wanted it more open and broad so you could change that figure if needed. Also on line nine, proof of, proof of, I think that was a little confusing.
Of address, of address.
Yes, uh huh. Line nine at the top.
Thank you.
Number three, proof of address, of address.
A parent.
And I, I understand the address of legal guardian, but I think we only need it once.
I think that's supposed to be parent is what she's saying.
Two things, do we know how many students right now we have that are out of county students? Rough, just a rough number.
I got it.
I was just curious.
Out of county or out of city?
Out of, well, the policy's, I'm just curious about the, who's paying the three thousand?
There's, I think there's only one or two that are now, it's very, very minor.
Very low, okay. And then my next question is, walk me through the photographic rec, it, it kind of got lost in the details here. Just kind of walk me through that part of the policy where it says, digital photographic record of adult enrolling students, because it was just, for me, it was just kind of hard to, you know, I know it's coming from the state, but just walk me through the process.
Basically, you're, you're taking a, a photograph and, and if, if they don't have, or if they don't have a photograph, then that we can have a photograph taken there. So when, when a child enrolls for school, so that's what it's saying there.
And what if they never get an ID, like a photo ID, they're just going to rely on the photo that's on file at the office?
I think, I believe that if they don't have a photo ID, then we do, we take, we take a photo there.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was trying, that's what I read in the policy, but it just wasn't straight. You know, I was just trying to make sure that's what we were doing because I didn't want to disenfranchise, disenfranchise anybody that didn't have a photo ID, or parents especially. So, for whatever reason.
Ms. Barrett?
Um, so it's not, I don't think it's in this policy or the one that is following, but when someone moves from their zone area to the county or moves out of their zone area or moves, and, or moves out of their zone area in the city or moves out of their zone area to the county, is that, is that in here?
Gary, is that one?
It's, it's this one or the next one?
I think that's the transfers, well.
I didn't, I didn't see it, but that didn't mean it wasn't there. And that's always been one of those things that I've wondered about.
Okay, I, I can explain it, whichever one it is. Okay, now, if they live in the city limits and they're at their zone school and they're going to go to one of our choice schools, they have to fill out, you know, the application to go there and that's allowed and they have to provide their own transportation for that. If they're in the city and they want to go to another city school and they move, their address moves, we let them stay at the school they were at to finish out the school year. They have that choice. Some choose to stay, some choose to go to the new school. If they move into the, if they live in the city and then they move out to the county, we give them the same option to stay at the school and finish up the year and then they have to fill an out of county form to come in. Now, if they're in one of the schools that's closed zone, chances are they're not going to get to go back to that school unless they're a rising fifth and sixth grader, because then we're a little more lenient on rising fifth and sixth graders. If they're at Discovery School and they move out into the county, that school is only for city students only. And the only way they could stay at that.
It gives priority to city school students.
That's what I'm going, yes, that's the rest of my sentence. Yes, yes, it's for city school zones only if there's a waiting list. If there's, if there's not a waiting list and they move out, then they can stay at the school. We do let them finish the school year if they move out during the year. But the priority is for city residents and if there's a waiting list and they move into the county, then they forfeit that position in that school. That's one that's much more unique because of the, because of the restriction of the city limits on that one.
And is that?
That's, that's in the transfer, that's, that's going to be, I think, Ms. Smith, probably in the next policy more than it is in this policy.
Okay.
Other questions, Ms. Renier?
I'm thinking this might be a typo in line twenty-three, under immunizations, practices of a well-organized religious demonization, should that be denomination?
Thank you.
I got a little worried there for a minute.
Uh oh. Yeah, I, I read that twenty, maybe I missed.
I know, well, I thought, I wasn't here last week, maybe I've just totally lost everything, I don't know.
Here's what that looks like, that looks like Linda typing from the previous policy and saying, Lisa, be sure to, to proof this because I don't have time to today.
It is denomination then, correct?
That's right, that would be my fault.
That's okay, I just, maybe we better correct it tonight.
Other questions on this policy? We've talked, we have a motion to approve six point two oh three.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Renier, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you.
Okay, your next policy is six point two oh six, and by the way, I love policies because they do make me laugh when something like that happens. That's, that's worth, that's worth doing the policies. Okay, this has to do with transfers within the system. Mr. Anderson, you get to answer any questions. I'll handle the typos, you handle the questions.
We have a motion to approve policy six two oh six. Thank you, Ms. Renier, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. Zero tolerance.
Zero tolerance, uh, this is a policy that has been debated since its first, since it first was voted in, into the state. There are some things that have stayed consistent with it. One of the things is that this is one of the few policies where it is the director of schools that bears the responsibility for any modification of the expulsion requirements and that's done on a case-by-case basis. As far as this policy, this is the policy that would basically say that a student who is found guilty of, or has dangerous weapons and there are specifically defined drugs and assault, and then the new part of this is electronic threats, so this would be new from our older policy, that they are zero tolerance for a calendar year and any difference in that has to be determined by the director of schools.
Question on line number six, pertaining to dangerous weapons, does not limit it to a firearm or anything manifestly designed. Uh, do we need to even try to list anything else?
I think.
Leave it wide open?
No, i- if you notice, it references a footnote to statutes. There are state statutes and federal statutes that define what that means, so we, we don't want to get into defining it because those statutes can change, but, but it references to that law.
Thank you. So, I mean, a pocket knife or a? Could be. Got you.
It depends, yeah, you have to, every situation's going to be different and that's where we would have to go research and see, make sure that it falls into that category.
I understand.
When this policy was first enacted into law, the knife was included and then that was pulled very shortly after that.
And it's not back on there, is it?
So it's, it's going to be, it's, it, it does give a case-to-case basis. Firearms is, is more specifically by law defined than probably anything else in here.
And I have pulled the statutes that help define those terms that I could send to you later for you to look at, they're very extensive and get rather confusing because they cite other, other statutes.
I'd like to have that.
But I could send those to you.
And other board members may as well for us when we come back to approve on second reading. All right, Mr. King?
Just, just, um, a student brings a handgun to school to show it off because he thinks it's cool and he does so in, in April and they're expelled for a year. The child cannot come back until April of two thousand and nineteen, correct?
Unless, unless the director of schools changes that.
Okay, but according to this, they're expelled for a year. So the next school year, they're going to miss the whole school year, so it's really going to set a student back. Am I, am I correct?
And if we have, and it is up to the director of schools, if we were to have a student, and this has only happened one time that I can think of, maybe twice since, since I was here at least, where we had a request for a student to come in from another school district who had been zero tolerant.
At their previous district. But like I said, you know, this is a pretty serious offense for a student and their family. You know, they could really set them back, okay.
To attend another school district if.
But.
The director approves it, otherwise they'll have to keep on looking at the other school. All right, Mr. Suddles?
That kind of goes with my question because it doesn't, the policy doesn't and it may not need to address any alternatives for, and I know with Rutherford County, they have alternative schools that they go to, they get zero tolerance. We don't have any such relief, is that correct?
No, not for elementary.
Not for elementary, so the parent would then need to find alternative schooling for them, either in another district or private schooling or something of that nature.
Or homeschool.
Or homeschool, or they don't want home.
Well, they, but they would not be homeschool under our, because homeschooling is going to fall under our jurisdiction too. So it would have to be, they would have to go to another district.
So when they are, someone is zero toleranced, uh, do they, is there a conference that happens and they're made aware of what their alternatives are?
They can, they can do an appeal to the director and most will do that. And in fact, when the zero tolerance is administered, the principal makes them aware that they can appeal. If they do appeal, then what that would look like is a pretty extensive investigation of, of what happened and how it happened and, so there would be an investigation. If, if it were a special needs student, there would be a manifestation determination. And so then, then a decision is made about whether to let the, the calendar year stand or whether to modify that.
Alternative school in the county starts at what grade level?
Freshman, I think.
Seventh?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, middle school, right, okay. Mr. Barrett?
I was just looking at our old policy and maybe we already talked about this, but two big things I noticed. The first one was the principals going to be enforcing or looking for these alleged violations? That was right, right at the beginning of the old policy, is that still the?
You would, you would assume so because technically they're responsible for discipline in the school.
And so, okay, and it says it in our old policy, I didn't see it in here, but, or it's probably an administrative, you know, or is it an AD or?
It would be.
Okay.
But any, anything that's going to happen at a school is going to, going to hit the principal first, right.
Okay, and then the other thing was, it lays out a whole appeal process with a board, you know, hearing. Uh, do we have that?
Yes, and that was.
That's another policy.
Oh, that's going to, so we separate, we're going to, okay, we're going to separate it out, this part, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Ballard?
Just understanding on line sixteen and seventeen, says, uh, drugs including any controlled substance, controlled substance analog or legend drug. I'm a child of the sixties, but I don't know legend drug.
Okay, legend drug, I had to research that, it's a prescription drug. It would be a prescription drug that is a legal drug, it's not a, a, in, it could be an over-the-counter drug as well. So I've had to look that up before.
Okay, so prescription or over-the-counter?
Yeah, but it depends on what kind of over-the-counter it is. There's, there's a definition for legend drug that takes a little bit of getting to, to determine. You really have to know what the substance is and then work your way backwards to see if it qualifies as a legend drug or a controlled substance.
Well, I've heard the stories before about, you know, the child forgets that they've got a Tylenol in their, in their pocketbook or the backpack. That's not a zero tolerance situation, is it?
Anything that, anything that we would look at with that is going to be treated on an individual basis. So what that looks like is the principal calling and, and we get on the phone with Kelly and say, okay, legally, where do we stand?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And that, that leads me to another question. There is a procedure in place for students that have allergy medication or have to take Tylenol, right? That I thought there was. And I know that we're talking about forgetting that, that, uh, that I have a Tylenol on my backpack, but I had a daughter that had chronic, chronic, chronic pain. So there's a procedure that, you know, that they would need to follow with the nurse and all that good stuff, correct?
Right.
All right, we have a motion to approve policy six point three oh nine, zero tolerance offenses.
I saw move.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. And that is our policies for the night. Reports and information, revenue and expenditure.
This board, you, you have two revenue expenditure reports in this particular packet. Uh, if you don't mind, we'll just go to the last one, the most current one, which ended in March. That put us at the seventy-five percent mark for the year. Uh, our net income is seven million, nine hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars, which is good, it's about seven hundred thousand behind where we were last year at this time. But last year, we didn't receive any growth money. This year, we still have growth money coming to us between six and seven hundred thousand dollars more. So remember, when you're growing, you've got to fund all of that upfront. So you're hitting, your expenses are hitting you first before you get the money from the state. So that's, that's why, that, that explains why we're behind a little bit on that one for this year. On the revenue, I mean, on, yes, on the revenue side, our property tax collections are up four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars and our sales tax collection's up a hundred and ninety-four thousand. Sales tax is not collecting as high a rate as we had hoped it would at this point, but property taxes are at a greater rate than what we thought. So overall, we, we seem to be okay on that area. The BEP number is up as well because of, we've received half of our growth money and the other half will come in June. Uh, revenue wise, we're at seventy-nine point seven percent. Last year at this time, we were at seventy-eight point six. Our revenue is up a little bit and that's basically because of the growth, growth monies. On the expenditure part, uh, we are, again, at the seventy-five percent. Our categories are, are looking, are looking very good at this point. Uh, we're at sixty-six point eight percent of our budgeted amount of expenditures. Last year, we were at sixty-five point three and once again, it's because we have to pay for all the growth on the front end of the, of the budget process. Last year, we were at sixty-five point three, and once again, it's because we have to pay for all the growth on the front end of the, of the budget process. Um, overall, we're, we're close to where we want to be. Of course, I always want to be much better, but we're, we're okay. Everybody, any questions on this one? Be glad to answer it.
We're going with the revised one, correct? The March revised one?
The March is the one. These are, these are two different months, the February and March.
I thought two of them came up for March. Wait.
Of expenditure and a revenue and a general purpose for March.
Maybe I printed two of the same thing. I'm sorry.
Yeah, one, there was two, but, there's two in here. One was for February, one was for March.
Yep, okay, thank you.
And the March is the most recent one we have.
Personnel report?
Your personnel reports are there. If you have any questions, you can ask Mr. Ringstaff.
I don't have questions on the report, but do we have a number of people that are planning to retire this year? More, I mean, I mean, I know that's in the report, but are there more that, how many people are planning to retire at the end of the school year?
By now, we have about three or four.
Wow.
And they have until when to turn that in?
We're going to honor those who have the battle on late night for growth. They have until whenever, you know. I mean, the sooner they do it, the quicker they get the target type T C R F to retire and check.
Can we?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we still get a copy of all of those, um, that I asked at the budget session for the entire year or no? Those that have been hired and those that have left us?
Oh, okay, just a minute.
That'd be great.
Any other questions on personnel report? All right, other business? We have any other business coming for our board tonight?
Yes. Ms. Rineer and I both attended the, um, school safety summit. What day was that, Ms. Rineer? Last Wednesday.
Last Tuesday, Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. Very good summit. I was able to snag two books. I did my best to get as many as I could, but other people had the same idea. So I have two. This was a very good and informative session, so whoever wants one, you can fight over them. The, um, a lot of good information, um, especially on new practices. I think we're way ahead. I always brag on us and I always feel really, 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 really good. Um, I don't know if I should say the county, but there's a county that's north that, um, they don't have as good of a relationship with their funding body as we do now. And they told kind of a hard, it was a hard story to me. Uh, I think it was six hundred and seventy dollars' worth of, uh, a grant that they were able to get, that they were available for. They'd done all the legwork for it. The commission had approved it, but then when it came down to doing it, they backed out for school safety. Um, and now they need that money, and they are fishing around for the money to fund, uh, S R Os, because they just don't have it, and it is, it's expensive. So we heard, uh, a lot of stories about them, different districts, trying to get S R Os into their schools, and how expensive it is, and how much it's going to cost. And I feel really fortunate with our working relationship. I thought about the, the meeting that we had upstairs, uh, with our local law enforcement, and the plans that we have, and, uh, already getting our gears turning, because I, I think what happens is, a lot of times, people didn't realize the seriousness of, uh, school safety, because this was ten years ago that they had the opportunity for this money, and they just kind of slept on it. But, uh, I want to compliment our system. We are always forward-thinking. Uh, there were some products that I think may be beneficial to us somewhere down the line, or maybe even closer, that we may want to look at. Uh, the information is in there, but it's a very good, very good summit, I think.
I agree. Bill West from the county, um, the one who actually started the S R O. program in Rutherford County, what is going to be the national president for the next school year. And so he, you know, he kind of led the whole thing, and I thought it was great that it was somebody that was from here. You know, that was good.
Very good. Lunch wasn't bad either.
Mr. Campbell, I wanted to make an announcement. You may be already aware of it, but this coming Sunday on the twenty-ninth, the new, uh, new police building is going to have an open house from one to five. So, uh, something we've all been anticipating, that, uh, you'll get to see some behind the scenes. So come join us at, uh, I think it's thousand four Highland Avenue is the address of the new police building. Come and see, and they'll be giving tours of the facility, so from one to five this coming Sunday.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
And if I could announce, Project One Four, we just received information. Jenny Ortiz called me last week, and she was terribly excited. But Project One Four, which is the David Price Foundation, is going to have a golf tournament at Indian Hills on May the seventeenth. There will be a shotgun start, whatever that means, at one o'clock, and it will benefit Bradley Academy. So they're working very closely with Bradley. There'll be lunch at eleven, speaking of lunch, be lunch at eleven-thirty, and the cost is four hundred dollars. And you can look on our website, and I think there's information there, or you can call the city school's office, and Lisa Trail will give you information too. So that's, we very much appreciate, um, David Price Foundation for Bonnie Price family for working with us.
Any other business, announcements coming for our board tonight? If not, I'm sorry, ma'am?
Will we, will we have another meeting for the rest of the budget?
Yes, we're going to have to have another meeting. Um, Dr. Gilbert, did they give us a, I know they said we didn't have to have it on the first. Do we have a window when we have to have it in by? Will we find that out tomorrow?
I have not talked to them about that. I'll, I'll find out about that.
Okay.
We actually have a meeting next couple of days.
Okay, yes, we'll have to have a meeting to approve it.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you and good night.